Good evening. I'd like to call the Lee County Board of Education meeting to order at this time. At this time, I want us to have a moment of silence. Father God, we thank you for all the blessings that you've given to us and we thank you for all the good things that you've done for us. For this season of Thanksgiving, we are very thankful for our lives and for everything you've done for us. In Christ's name we pray. Amen. At this time, it was time to say the Pledge of Allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have no public comments, so at this time, we'll go to the vision, policy, and the Code of Ethics.
Mr. Chair, I have the vision statement. Lee County Schools in partnership with the community will provide challenging learning experiences for students in a safe and supportive environment. We are committed to academic excellence, technological innovation, social responsibility, and lifelong learning. Our success will be demonstrated by the achievement of our students and their positive participation in society.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, Code of Ethics for School Board Members, Policy 2120. The Board recognizes that collectively, individually, all members of the Board must adhere to and accept the Code of Ethics in order to improve public education. Members of the Lee County Board of Education should avoid conflicts of interest and appearance of conflicts of interest as we handle the work of the Board; avoid solicitation or acceptance of gifts in return for advice or assistance on matters concerning the operation of the business of the Board; avoid the misuse of public funds; avoid misinterpretation or falsification of facts; and avoid making confidential information public. The Board accepts the Code of Ethics established by the North Carolina School Board Association.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like a motion for the approval of the agenda of 11/27/2018.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the agenda of 11/27/2018.
Need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. The motion is approved. The next is the approval of the minutes of 10/9 and 11/8, 2018.
Mr. Chair, make a motion we approve the minutes of October 9, 2018, and November 8, 2018.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have the approval of the minutes. At this time, we're going to go to the Chairman's report. We have so much to finish tonight and to discuss, so we're just going to start one at a time. I want to welcome everybody back after Thanksgiving. It's been a blessing for me to serve on this Board and we have a few things before I made a few comment. But at this time, I know we have a representative that went to the North Carolina School Board Association. Do we have a report back from those of you that went to the School Board Association?
Yes, sir. I went for one day, sir, right before my mission trip to Jamaica, and it was an excellent opportunity to learn not just about things that we typically do each week, but a refresher on our legal compliance with the Board meetings. And the best takeaway from that situation was that the majority of the people who were in my class were actually the people who were newly elected. And it makes sense that they learned what their expectations are on the Board, their legal expectations. They had, they also went over Robert's Rules and things like that. And so, the biggest takeaway from that, other than the notes, which I'm more than willing to share with some of our newer members, is that in the future, whenever there's an election process that's going on, I highly recommend that, like the surrounding counties, that we send the new Board members during that month, so before they even get on the Board, because they hit the ground running in December, is that they're already equipped with this information, sir.
That is...
But thank you so much. I had a wonderful time, and one day, I learned a lot.
That is wonderful. I think the suggestion is in order, and I hope the Board continues to do that. At this time, we have so many things during the month of November. We had election. We have different things to be thankful for, and I want to say to you, if you are not thankful for just being alive, you are not thankful. You need to be very thankful for all that God has done for you. He said, "I don't have money, but you are alive. Tomorrow will be all right." Okay? I want to thank everyone here tonight for coming to our Board meeting. I want to recognize the press call that were here. Noah is here. Is anybody from the newspaper, apart from Noah? Okay, Noah. And then, we recognize the representative from the military schools. Thank you for seeing you tonight, and thank you for what you do all the time for representing the military kids in our schools. At this time, I would also like to allow the superintendent to go and take his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This time, I'd like to ask Dr. Johnny Waller to come forward. I know this Board is very proud tonight, able to recognize a program within our school district that won a North Carolina School Board Association Award, and I'm going to let Dr. Waller talk a little bit about that, but it was at the nomination of this Board, and we're very proud. Dr. Waller, I think you have some guests here as well that can...
I do.
...help us show this off a little bit.
Thank you. If I could have a part of your staff to come up? Mr. Chair, Board Members, Dr. Brown, we do very much appreciate the opportunity to represent Lee County with Project Lift Off. I cannot take the credit for Project Lift Off. I sign off on the purchase order and say yes or no. These are the people that make Project Lift Off what it is, because they establish those positive relationships with all the students, and they keep coming back, year after year after year, with students, and the students keep coming back to the staff. So they are the ones that have created the program. They are the ones that make a difference each and every day.
Dr. Waller, if you could speak into that microphone, I think they're coming to tell you you're not getting the audio.
I'm not loud enough.
You're not on audio. Thank you.
You can take it out of the holder if you want to, if you want to roam with it a little bit.
But these are the people that make the difference in the lives of the children that come to Project Lift Off. They love the children, they care for them, and we actually have one of our students with us tonight, so we are very glad to have you with us. We have Taylor Waters, she is also a teacher at Bullock. We have Britten House, that is at Deep River. We have, and you were our Amazing Shake winner, right? Do you want to tell the Board members just a little bit about what Amazing Shake does? What that competition was?
So, the Amazing Shake was this competition that taught you how to use your manners, and discipline, and your respect. So there was this program we had to go through, and you had to use your manners, and there was these type of situations where you had a, where they had a kick in. And so, when I was in that program, I got second at first, so then we did a final round, and that's when I got first.
That is wonderful.
Thank you very much. Congratulations, and we still are planning on you going to Atlanta. We're still working on that. We have Ashley, and Ashley's just Ashley Mann, Ashley Matt. She is a teacher at Deep River. We have Dennis Duke, who's our bilingual social worker. We have Sal Cosmo, he is Assistant Principal at Bullock, and his wife also works with the program. She's probably home with the little one tonight. Peggy Mann, Peggy Mann, we have to, at the end of each program, I always have to tell the parents if they lose their children, Peggy has them, because she would take each and every one of them home. And then, we have Melinda. Melinda is the one, the glue that kind of holds us all together, because she is always running around making sure that all the students and the teachers have what they need to make the program successful. We are very thankful for the opportunity, the nomination, and we appreciate all the support that you give to Project Lift Off. And I very much appreciate all the support that they provide for our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Before you go...
Go ahead.
Before you go, how long have we had this program? I want you to refresh my memory.
It was in 2010, the year I came. It came about because we had money that we had to spend when I came, and we didn't know what to do with it. So actually, Peggy said, "Well, can we have a summer program?" And since then, it started that year, and with Peggy, one of our former social workers, Ashley, and that's how it started that year. And we've gone every year except one since that, and we had the budget cut that one year that we lost so many of our positions, and we did not do it that year. But we now have, what, was it 32 students?
Three.
Thirty-seven. And Ashley, the first quarter report, how many of them got to go on their, the trip for making their...
We had all but one qualify, and so that's, they have to fulfill the promise of attendance, so they can't miss more than three unexcused absences, their behavior, so no incidents. It's a three amazing with middle school students, and several of these, you know, when I look at the report, I go, "Oh, I can't believe what this one had before," but they did it very well, and then, of course, they're looking at their academics. We checked in with them about halfway, and then they have made progress. So that is definitely our highest, yeah, in several, maybe honor roll, in terms of experience.
And I will tell you this, that every year, I've enjoyed, and I believe some of the Board members who have attended, in the last, that's why I was trying to, I wanted to refresh my memory, because the same year when I came on Board, is when, that summer, when it started. So I really appreciate what you're doing. Some of these people you see tonight, when you go to that program, you will enjoy seeing them, they act like kids, they roll like kids, they do everything, just making it enjoyable for those kids, and it's wonderful to see what you guys are doing, the life of our young people, and we thank the Board for nominating, and for the School Board Association recognizing what you do.
Dr. Waller, I'd like to present you, I'll come down and present you with the plaque, and maybe we can get a picture of everybody together. That'd be great.
Mark, could I have a point of personal privilege, please, just for a second? I went, only had one day, and it's what they call, it's like, it's the one day before the North Carolina School Board Association starts, and I just want you to know that while I was there, they, of course, they're going to target me, and so they asking me the questions about your program, and I showed them the video. You guys made a huge difference, yours was the first program I ever saw during the summer, and she recommended to tell you that instead of being Lift Off, she thought that the name of your program should be Lift Up, after watching you guys dance, so I thought it was amazing for them. Thank you so much.
So, thank you.
Mark, your calendars, I think it's July 24, we're closing. We would love to have all of you back.
Yes. Let's, the Board...
And also, just so you know, I'll say that.
Oh. Okay.
We can get everybody together, get a little picture.
Yeah. There's Johnny.
We're going to have to make some rows, I think, because the hall folks in the back, and the east, and the west halls.
You guys are the important people. You guys get up front. I'll take that.
That way, it's just way...
We play, I like to play.
Oh, yeah, we've got to get the podium out of the picture.
Yeah, I think, hang on.
We might have to, yeah, to make sure that you can see her.
We can't, we gotta wait, we can't see.
All right, Ophelia, I think I'll see you.
Come on up.
I'm enjoying you.
Yep. Perfect. All right. Okay. All right, I think we're good.
Thank you.
I will offer her...
Get to recognize our Clean School of the Month Award. I'll turn it over to you.
We are very excited, because our clean schools are happy schools, and our scores are just over the top. We had seven of our schools that scored 96 and above, as far as their custodial inspection, and Greenwood was our winner school with 99.
Excellent.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
And I agree, clean schools are happy schools. I just walked in this morning to my own building, and as soon as I walked through the door today, and most every day, I noticed how beautiful my school is. It smells wonderful for the kids that are coming in in the morning. My folks couldn't be here tonight, they're very hardworking. We were really privileged to be honored this month in particular. We've had a few issues, some obligations that some of our folks had, jury duty and such as that, so we were short-staffed most of that first, this past month, so thank you very much for the honor. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to recognize our Superintendent's Extra Effort Award. Typically, this is for a staff member, or student, or someone working in schools that have made a really huge difference. I thought tonight would be appropriate to recognize three people who have served not only this community, but this Board and our school district with great honor and service and effort to do everything they could, to do the best they could for the children in Lee County. And I thought tonight would be a perfect night to recognize three folks who've given their best effort, I think, on behalf of the school district. First person I'd like to recognize has been on our Board from 2014 to 2018, and served on Curriculum Instruction Committee and various other duties as assigned by the Chair, as that might be, and has done a wonderful job and always put the effort of her focus on students. And I just want to thank her for everything she has done, and I know everybody else will join me in awarding this Superintendent's Extra Effort Award to Dr. Ophelia Livingston. Next person I'd like to recognize has also served on the Board from 2014 to the present. She has served on various committees, from finance to policy, and also been able to jump in and help wherever needed, as we've gone along the way, has been a member, just like Dr. Livingston, and always put her focus on the goals for the Board and the school district, and has always put the interest of children first, and people recognize that. And I just want to thank you for your efforts as well. Second Superintendent's Extra Effort Award to Sandra Bowen. Our third award, gentleman who's been on the Board since 2010 to the present, and for the last two years has served as Chair. Part of that, also served as Vice Chair, and has been on various committees to serve, and of course, as most people know, the role of Chair is, requires a lot of time and effort and work, and I think he has always, as I've said about the other two members, put the focus of the district on our children and the community in Lee County. Can't have enough good things to say about all three, but we'd just like to recognize Mark Akonosho, Superintendent's Extra Effort Award. If we could, I'd like to have two pictures. I'd like to have a picture of you three together, we can, Haley, and then a picture with the Board, if that's appropriate.
Okay. At this time, before we go further...
Mr. Chair, with your permission, I didn't know if you or Ms. Livingston or Ms. Bowen had anything you'd like to say at this time?
I've never been one short for words. The last four years have been a distinct honor. I came onto this Board, I've said time and again, probably the most naive person to ever have run for office. Blew my mind to even be elected, but the privilege of serving the citizens and the students and the staff at Lee County has been one that I will treasure. I think that the work that I've done on the Policy Committee, the Finance Committee, I've done with my heart in the right place, my head in the right place, and for the benefit of those who work in our schools every single day. I'm sad to be leaving this Board, but God willing, I'll still be involved in our schools, I'll still, maybe even more so than I was when I was on the Board, you know? This takes a lot of time, so maybe it'll allow me to plug back into the schools and do the things that I was doing even before I came on this Board. And so, I wish the district well, I wish the new School Board members well, I think that you're in good hands, and that good things are going to happen in Lee County, and I can't wait to see what the future holds. That being said, I hope that, God willing, family's healthy and everything's well, we'll see what happens in two years. I'd like to come right back and fill this seat again, perhaps. So I thank you for giving me this opportunity, I thank you to these members of the Board, and even the predecessors that I served with over the four-year period, that it has been an honor getting to know each and every one of you and serving with you on this Board. Thank you.
I counted a joy, a blessing, to be on, to have served the Board. Thank you all for the opportunity to be here and represent Lee County, represent the teachers, the students, and the central office. Again, it's been a pleasure. I look forward to supporting all of you in the future, and welcome to the new members who will be on the Board next month.
Thank you. I was going to take a time of personal privilege, because for me, I would say this, it's a retirement from being on the School Board, but I will stay involved, I'll be watching what's going to happen, and I wanted to thank every one of you. It's a great honor for me to serve on this Board for over eight years. I was elected May of 2010, and I've served in various positions, various committees. Before I got on the School Board, I served on different boards in the city and in the county, but to be on the School Board was a great honor for me to serve the people of Lee County. I have one of my sons here, and my wife, I want to recognize my wife, Caroline, and my son, Joseph, came from Houston, decided to stay on here for a few days before he goes back, so we've been enjoying him. When I came on Board, he was in high school then, and he was here at Lee Senior, and it was a very great honor for me to serve, and he was a student here in the school system then. As he's sitting down there, he has a graduate degree, master's degree, he's working as a financial analyst, and that's what Lee County School have done. Went to one of the best schools in the nation. So that's what Lee County have done, that's what you have done. I didn't know he would be here tonight. He was walking from home, and he said, "What's going on?" So I told him, "We have a meeting tonight," and I get to see that we have a meeting, and my wife says she's coming, she said, "Mom, I'll come with you." So he came to us, with Mom, to see what's going on. So also, I want to say this to every one of you, all the staff and superintendents and my fellow Board members, I really, really appreciate our work together. We've moved this county forward. When I was going to run for School Board this last time, I didn't want to run, I just felt I have so much going on, I'm close to retirement, and I just don't want to run anymore, but I saw so much to be done. So I said, "Okay, I will do this for a little bit, and probably resign in the middle of the, in the middle of my term," but as God will have it, He allowed me to go back and do what I really love to do. So I'm so happy to have that opportunity. I'm sad leaving you, like one of us said, but I know that the work we've done is going to remain in capable hands, and the School Board will continue to do well. I can't see you guys going any other way, but to be moving forward with what we've done here. Also, I want to say a few things about where we were when I came on Board. In 2010, Lee County School, Lee County Senior, we were debating before then whether to build or not to build. I supported the building of this school. The place where we're sitting tonight, we used to have a meeting, how many of us remember that we used to have a meeting at the Commissioner's place? We used to have a meeting at the Commissioner's place, and then we would wait if they have a meeting for us to have a meeting. If they cancel something, or they have some other emergencies, then we won't have a meeting. So when we have our retreat, I said, "We need to have our place that is out of politics, but will be about children." So I said, "Why don't you let us have a boardroom?" Bill Tatum was the Chair then, and Jeff Moss was the Superintendent. So they decided it would be good, so they look around, they said they would look around to see where we're going to have it. I said, "It would be a place where our kids can come, and will be plenty of space for us." So I'm very proud to be in this room. That was an idea that was brought by thinking and looking forward. Lee County, you cannot be looking back, you have to be looking forward. So I want to thank every one of you for all the good things that we've done together. When I came on Board, I'm saying this as a farewell, I'm not coming back to run for School Board again. When I was going to run the last time, you know, when I was starting on the School Board, student success was important to me, and academics, we have moved this school forward. We didn't have IB then, we have International Baccalaureate. When I came on Board, Lee County, Lee Valley College was a struggling school. Make different changes with the superintendents, and the school is one of the best in the state. That's something that we did together. So many other things. We have another elementary school coming on. I have so many things that I can look back and say, "We are so thankful." SAT have gone up since then. Graduation was 63%, is 90% now. 94% of our students are graduating with more than a diploma. So many things that has been done. We have AVID now, countywide, in terms of academics. We have a LEADI ME, we have so many things. Academics, what do you call it? NAF Academy, we have NAF Academy. Wasn't there when I came on Board. So many good things have been happening. Please don't let this go without you guys forwarding it. When I came on Board, it was difficult to even get money for our teachers. We moved the teachers' pay from 7% to 10%, working with the Commissioners. I remember calling the Commissioners with... I remember calling the commissioners with Linsmith, and we're working them and make sure that we increase the teacher supplement. Those are kind of things that we did together here. When I came on board, I have a son that was running track, and when we go out to go and run track, the numbers will be different, because we didn't have a rubberized track. So, I took it on myself to be working on it. Every year, I would say, "Andy," when Andy came on board, I said, "We have to have the track." "Oh, we don't have money." I said, "I'm the chair of the finance committee, we need to look for money to have a track." At that time, my kid was not in school, so that I won't have a conflict, and I were able to have a rubberized track for all of these kids. So, when I think of so many things that we've done together, it's been a blessing to be on this board, and I want to thank every one of you, the teachers, the faculty, the retention have been good, new principals, new blood, people are doing great things in this school, and I know you continue to do great things. And Andy, I thank you for the work we've done together, and in the last two years, actually in the last five years, six years, I've been a vice chair, I was vice chair for four years before I became, and Linsmith too, before I became a chair. So, I want to say thank you to every one of you who will be around, who will be watching what you guys will be doing, I will be praying for you and cheering you on. I want to say congratulations to the new board coming, but you know what, the future is about the kids, not about politics. So, remember that, their life cannot be wasted. You know mine when I was here until I was 18. 18 years is when we have to do everything we have to do for them, and he's here today, he's not working in Lee County, he can walk anywhere, he's working from home. That's what education can do for you, that's what the future that's good can do for you. So, I want to say thank you to everyone, and God bless you and God speed for everyone. So, at this time, we'll continue with our board meeting, so.
May I just say one other thing?
Yes, Andy.
Round of applause for our three board members again, please. Just a couple announcements, on the 11th, at 5:30, we have the swearing-in ceremony and reception for the new board members, and also the reorganization of the board. And then, the regular board meeting takes place at 6 with the reorganization. With all the holidays and timeout over the course of November, we'll be, with our accountability update, we'll be looking at benchmarks next go-round. So, that's my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. At this time, I will go to the committee reports, the curriculum.
Good evening, Mr. Chair. The middle school. The middle school CNI committee met at San Lee Middle School on October the 10th, 2018, at 3:30 PM. The committee listened and commented on the following school improvement plans, San Lee Middle, East Lee Middle, and Wesley Middle. The elementary school CNI committee met at Deep River Elementary School on October the 24th at 3:30 PM. The committee listened and commented on the following school improvement plans, Greenwood, J. Glenn Edwards, J.R. Ingram, Floyd Knight, Broadway, Tramway, Warren Williams, Bullock, and Deep River. I would like to congratulate Tramway Elementary School, the principal, the students, and the staff for winning the Head of the Class Award, such a great honor for the school to receive such a prestigious award. The high school curriculum CNI met at Lee Early College on November the 24th at 3:30. Dr. Rob Dietrich, he presented four new CTE curriculum courses, Principles of Family and Human Services, Pharmacy Tech, Sustainable Agricultural Production 1, and Sustainable Agricultural Production 2. If you have any questions on these four courses, Dr. Dietrich is here and is available to answer any questions you may have. The committee also listened and commented on the following school improvement plans, Lee Early College, Breck Street Academy, Southern Lee, and Lee County High School. All of the district's school improvement plans are on the consent agenda for approval. Mr. Chair, this concludes my report.
Thank you. At this time, we'll go to facility and technology.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Actually, the FNT Committee has met twice since we last met, on October 30th and November 26th. At the October 30th meeting, the first item on our agenda was a new program being offered by the YMCA called Kinder Camp Program at Floyd L. Knight during the summer. Dr. Rob Dietrich presented the YMCA Kinder Camp Program to the committee. We discussed it thoroughly, we had some questions, and it was consensus of the opinion to table that issue until the next meeting. The next item was a wide-area network bid. This is the network that allows schools to communicate technologically with each other. It was a consensus of the committee to award the wide-area network bid to Conterra for three years in an amount of $979,563.60. And incidentally, we will be paying 80% of that amount, or $783,650.88, out of E-rate funds, and the state funding will be used for the remainder 20% of $195,912.72. That item is under your consent agenda. We received an elementary school update from Chris McNeil. He gave us a progress report, the school building is what was as of October 30th, on time and on schedule. Dr. Bryan reported that we'll need a FNT committee meeting shortly to meet with Don Kavatchik to continue discussion of redistricting for the new WB Wicker School. Committee member Kelly expressed his thanks and appreciation to Chris McNeil on his assistance with trash issued between Southern Lee Middle School and Lee County High School. County manager was also involved in that, but we appreciate the effort to clean that area up. Chris McNeil also reported that we have been approved to apply for approximately $64,000 in FEMA funds, and we will receive some $54,000 insurance from Hurricane Florence damages. That concludes that meeting, and the second meeting for FNT occurred on November 26th. We continued the conversation about the YMCA Kinder Camp Program. Zach West was at our meeting yesterday, and the committee approved that. It's gonna be a really superb program that the YMCA is gonna conduct at Floyd L. Knight. They particularly wanted it so they could use the pool facility, and we're really excited to be able to offer that to our kids. The next item was a WB Wicker Elementary School redistricting. Dr. Bryan and Attorney Love are reviewing that issue, and we will probably have to have another call meeting to discuss that as time permits. The next item was a fiscal 2020-2024 capital improvements program. Chris McNeil presented Physical Year 2020 through 2024 Capital Improvement Program, and that item is under, we will present, actually at a meeting in December, and that will be under New Business at our December meeting. We received bids on the maintenance department storage building. Mr. McNeil presented the storage bids, and it was a consensus of the committee to award the bid to the lowest bidder, Affordable Roofing, an amount of $12,598, and that is under your consent agenda. The next item is a Southern Lee High School and the Deep River Elementary School, we're replacing carpet and VCT bids. Chris McNeil presented the carpet and the replacement bids, and it was a consensus to award the bid to the lowest bidder, Southern Carpet, in the amount of $22,485. We received another Wicker Elementary School update, and the construction continues to be on progress. The next FNT meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, January the 22nd.
Okay, thank you. The next one is finance.
And we've had two finance committee meetings since we last met. The first one was October 30th, it was fairly brief. Kelly Jones updated the finance committee that seven vendors had replied to Cafeteria Benefits RFP request. And they met, the committee met on November 7th and November 8th. Each member who is applying for the RFP was given 15 minutes for their presentation. The committee will meet one more time November 15th to make their recommendation, and we received a board expense summary. The finance committee met again on November 27th. I hope we get paid extra for this, Mr. Chairman.
I guess we will.
Can you put that in for me, please?
I will do that, I will make a motion for that.
Thank you. The first item was the audit contract extension. Kelly Jones, who is our finance director, requested permission to extend the audit contract due to the hurricane, finance being down a staff member, and Kelly's husband has had some medical issues he's recovering from. This will simply give Kelly more time to complete the finances for the December 31st, 2018 deadline. Patrick Kelly made a motion to approve the extension. The next item was the Cafeteria Benefits RFP. Dr. Kobel made a recommendation on behalf of the Lee County Schools 125 Flexible Cafeteria Benefits Selection Committee to use Mark III Brokerage Incorporated for open enrollment that would begin in April of 2019. He stated there were seven candidates, and one backed out, leaving six that came and presented their benefits available. The committee narrowed it down to Paul Gay Insurance Investment Services and Mark III Brokerage. They both came back with additional questions. Mr. Kobel stated that it was the unanimous vote for Mark III Brokerage, for they had guaranteed acceptance even with pre-existing conditions for AFLEC and other policies offered. The last item is a 2018-2019 budget resolution. Mrs. Jones handed out a copy of the reconciled budget broken out by a funding source. She stated the resolution includes all of the customary components of the budget that bring the school system into compliance with the Fiscal Budget and Control Act for 2018-2019. The total recognized, total is $91,439,232.67. And that concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. At this time, since we're still under finance, I want to talk to the advisory committee, because I appointed Dr. Kobel, Stephen Kobel, to represent the board on that.
I didn't remember you fondly when I sat with that crowd. No, actually, I told the committee I was with, I was very intimidated. It was the best of the year, teachers and administrators, and they did most of the questions, they did most of the evaluations, and when we took the vote at the end of it, they voted, and for reasons that Dr. Smith has already gone over, I completely supported those who would recognize that Mark III had what they felt like was a superior program. The benefits were there, there were particular things in there, guaranteed acceptance, pre-accepted conditions, and a substantial increase in dental and vision plans, along with a couple of other things that we liked, as well as compatibility with the finance department that we have in the system. So, I completely supported their decision, we feel good about it.
That's good, that's good. Thank you for serving on that advisory committee. At this time, we'll go to policy.
Mr. Chair, the policy committee met on the 23rd of October, and we had quite a few policies to go through, it was a doozy of a meeting. Based upon the recommendations of the policy committee, we do have several policies on for this evening that we will need to suspend the rules in order to pass them upon first reading, in order to get them on the books in time for the deadlines imposed by the state. And then, we have several other that will be asked for first reading tonight, and then will be on for approval on second reading next month. So, the November 29th policy committee meeting that was scheduled for this week, there are no new policies coming down from the state, and due to the reorganization of the board and so forth, we felt it incumbent upon us just to simply cancel that meeting pending reorganization of the board and a new placement. So, that concludes my report from the policy committee.
Thank you. At this time, we would like a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we approve the consent agenda as provided.
Need a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
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 The consent agenda is approved. So, at this time, we have no unfinished business, but we have new business, and we've, there will most of it, the Section 125 flexible benefit plan recommendation.
Actually, it's my name, but I'd like for Dr. Kobel to make that motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that Mark III Brokerage with a flexible benefits plan be accepted for Lee County Schools' system, for its staff and personnel in the spring of this next year.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, motion carried.
Mr. Chair, if I can have a point of personal privilege on this, this is, the flexible benefits thing is something that I, gosh, how long have we been working on this, Dr. Smith? Way back, when I was on the...
At least three years.
Yeah, at least three years we've been working on this, and I think it's important to recognize as a board, from a public perspective, a lot of times, they assume that the Board of Education is working for the students, and that's absolutely acceptable, I think that's great, but to recognize that we're also mindful of our staff and our faculty, and this is a case where we're not always able to hold the purse strings, we can't always give you a raise, but when there's an opportunity to save you money on the benefits that we provide, then I think that that's kind of like a raise. And so, I'm glad to see that we took this time, it'd been over nine years since our benefits had even been reviewed, and so, getting it onto a system where we can review and we can make sure that the benefits you're getting are the best that are available at the best possible price, is something that shows that we're committed not just to the classroom, but to the people that are under our umbrella, and the people that are working for us each and every day. So, I'm just glad to see that the board has come through with this, we've taken a look at it, and allowed the, like you said, the teachers of the year, the administrators and so forth, to choose the program that best fits their needs, and I'm just really excited to see this for them, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, may I add to that?
Okay.
The committee that had been chosen to work with me on that were very, very good. Some of the best questions, some of the best observations that I've ever heard in a committee meeting, and they were intimidating, they were the best of the teachers, best of the administrators, and just, they did a superb job.
That's why I appointed you on the advisory board, because I know you not be intimidated.
You just wanted to make me feel like this, yes? They did a good job, they were very good.
That's wonderful, that's wonderful. At this time, we will entertain, what do you call it, the next thing is a policy, board policy for approval of the first reading.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Lee County Board of Education suspend Policy 2420, the adoption of policies, and approve the following policies on first reading. That's Policy 1310/4002 Parental Involvement, Policy 2670 Business Advisory Council, Policy 4152 Unsafe School Choice Transfer, Policy 5020 Visitors to the Schools, Policy 5030 Community Use of Facilities, Policy 6305 Safety and Student Transportation Services, Policy 6315 Drivers, and Policy 7405 Extracurricular and Non-Instructional Duties.
Thank you. Since it's coming from the committee, I just entertain a motion to approve the first reading.
So, move, Mr. Chair.
We have a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 The motion is approved.
You ready for the, nope, never mind, yeah.
You're done number three?
Sorry, this is the next, I got myself confused there for a moment. Mr. Chair, I move that Lee County Board of Education approve the first reading of the following policies. Policy 50, I'm sorry, 1510/4200/7270 School Safety, Policy 1720/4015/7220 slash 7225, Policy 2110, Policy 2121, Policy 3410, Policy 3420, Policy 3430, Policy 3470 slash 4305, Policy 4125, Policy 4333, Policy 4525 slash 6125, Policy 5025, Policy 6220, Policy 6401 slash 9100, Policy 6450, Policy 6560, Policy 7130, Policy 7130 Regulation, deletion, Policy 7300, Policy 7610, Policy 7730, Policy 7920, Policy 8305, Policy 9110, and Policy 9120.
Thank you.
Please don't make me repeat it, thank you.
All of this is handed down from the state, so we just need to put it, put them in our own policy here. We did a motion.
So moved.
We need a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. The next, number four, is the calendar for traditional Tranway Elementary and Lee Early College calendars.
Good evening, members of the board, Dr. Brian. It's nice to be here with you again to talk about calendar. Wasn't that long ago, we added a little bit of time to this year's calendar, and we are already ready to talk about next year's calendar. So Ms. Spence and I, as you all know, we co-chair the calendar committee, which consists of school personnel as well as parents, so we get a good distribution in the district of people to represent what they believe the calendar should look like. And what you have before you, or should have before you, is a copy of the 2019 traditional calendar, the 2019-20 Lee Early College calendar, and the 2019-20 Tranway calendar. And what you will find is a pretty balanced calendar with a hundred and eighty days on it, with two equal semesters of ninety days. It has been a while since I think we've had numbers that are that equal, which I think is fantastic for the high schools especially. And we do meet the minimum requirement of a thousand and twenty-five. We are well over a thousand and twenty-five with a thousand and seventy-one hours if you take away the half-days that are included. So with that, I thought we had very good discussion in, with the committee. They all agreed that this was a pretty well-balanced calendar, and with that, we bring it to you here tonight for approval for the 2019-20 school year.
I have one comment, and it's funny because I should have brought this to your attention a while ago, and it literally came back to me when I saw this hit the, hit the agenda, and that is, I had a request from a parent, could you please put the school start and end times on the calendar? Meaning, elementary is intake at 7:30, out at 2:30, middle intake at seven, you know, so that that is on there. I had a new parent to the community that was ready to send their kid to school, and went, what time does school start for middle school? And I thought, well, that would be an easy one, I think, to put out there in an easily accessible spot.
There are some different start and end times among, like for example, Sand Lee Middle School, their start and end time is different from west and east.
Well, that would explain the question.
Because of the Southern Lee schedule and the traffic, so that's a difference.
That would make perfect sense, though.
But that said, each school has been asked, and I think they comply, to put the start and end time on their website. So a parent should be able to find that information on the website.
Well, fortunately for this person, it was somebody in my neighborhood, so I knew in their case what to tell them was accurate information. I did not realize that difference, because we're not slated for Sand Lee, so I would not have known that. Very good.
Did, Dr. Dietrich, did I understand that this represents a thousand and seventy-one hours?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Right.
Do we have any further question before we ask for a motion? If we don't have any further question to Dr. Dietrich and Ms. Spence, we'll ask for a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the 2019-2020 traditional Tranway and Lee Early College calendars as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The motion is approved. Thank you, Rob. I need a motion to go into closed session.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, the Lee County Board of Education go into closed session for the following purpose, to discuss information that is privileged, confidential, and not a public record in the North Carolina General Statute, Section 143 through 18,11A1, and to consult with attorney to preserve attorney-client privilege, information, including pending litigation, captioned LS and JS versus Lee County Board of Education, case number 1.18 CV 701, MDNC, and administrative proceeding, caption JL, by and through his mother, MH, versus Lee County Public Schools, 18-dash EDC 03562, in the Office of Administrative Hearings under North Carolina General Statute, Section 143 through 18,11A3.
We need a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're in closed session at this time. Thank you all for coming, we don't want you to go if you want to stay around.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we come on a closed session.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are out of closed session. At this time, we need a motion to approve the attorney's report.
No.
Personnel report.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we approve the personnel report as presented.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion, we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We stay adjourned.